Okay, we're ready to go.
Okay. Welcome, everybody. Here and online. Mayor Ken Budge is calling the regular session of the mayor and council, city of Bisbee, county of Cochise, state of Arizona, to be held on Tuesday, February 2nd, 2021 at 7:00 PM by Zoom. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Louis Pollak.
Here.
Councilmember Joni Giacaminho.
Here.
Councilmember Frank Davis.
Present.
Mayor Ken Budge. Councilmember Leslie Johns.
Here.
Councilmember Joan Hansen.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Anna Klein. There you go, I heard you that time. City staff Teresa Coleman, city manager, Ashley Coronado, city clerk, Carrie Bagley, finance director, Joelle Landers, personnel director, Jesus Haro, public works director, Joe Ward, building inspector, Joe Estes, city attorney.
Thank you, everyone. For a moment of silence, I'm going to stay on the COVID situation and ask everybody to to remember that our state's doing better, but we're not there yet. And to give everybody a second to think about Cochise County getting some more vaccine. I know some of people have been able to get it, others have not, and I just want to let everybody remember that we still have people that are getting sick and that to give a little thought to and hope that we can continue the vaccine and stay on top of this. So take a moment. All right, everybody, no real proclamations or announcements. I just want to remind everybody that this month is is remembrance of of our African Americans and and the black. So I just want to say that there's a lot to do and and we, as a country, just continue to come together and 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 work as one. And that would be the absolute best that we could ask for. So I believe in Call the Public, we do have one letter. It refers to, I think, item eight, but I'm just going to let it read here because we only have one, one of them, and and I will call a backup if necessary on when item eight comes up. But I didn't want to keep our personnel director here till the end of this, just to read one letter and on eight. So go ahead and you can read this now if you'd like.
Thank you, Mayor Budge. This is for item number eight from James Terry, trustee owner of EJT Trust. When transferring or selling city properties, will the city maintain jurisdictions to put infrastructure to existing properties? I am the owner of 348 Williams, and I have no sewer to my lot, but have been trying and would like to have sewer installation in the near future. Will I still have access to sewer connections at the bottom of Star Avenue, even if sewer line will have to cross private land? Meaning, if city approves application, will I still be able to put a sewer line up canyon without having to pay owners of now private property? I don't want to get sewer locked, so to say. I hope that this sort of thing can be written into the deed of transfer. Thank you for your time, consideration, and concerns regarding this situation. Truly, James Terry.
All right, thank you. I'll make note of that, and and we'll ask that question about sewer lines being able to be extended when item eight comes up. Thank you. So on to general business. Accounts payable. Do I have a motion for accounts payable?
I move that we pay accounts payable in the amount of $288,999.8.
We have a motion and a second to approve accounts payable. Do we have questions? Do I see any hands? I have one. Go ahead, Anna.
On page one, there is a charge for the ACMA conference, and I was just wondering when and where it was. Was it in person or virtual?
It was in person, socially distanced, and it was this past week.
Where at?
In Sedona.
Okay, thank you. And on page two, it's a small amount for bookcases in 7564. But didn't we have any that we could have moved over from the old city hall?
We didn't have any bookcases.
Yes. It was to fit in a very specific space in the new building.
Okay, thank you. And then on three, there was a charge for office supply of cutlery for operational expenses. Why do we need cutlery?
May I, Teresa?
Sure, thank you.
Okay. At city hall, we still do not have a sink installed yet, and so I purchased office supply was separate. It was needs for my office, but then I picked up some disposable cutlery and things of that nature because we do not have anywhere to wash dishes or rinse things off other than the bathroom.
Okay, I know that at the school district, we supplied our own. And then I've got just a couple more, and it's on page three and four. I want, why the difference in charges on the vehicle leases? They range from 33843 up to 2,43820. Why the big difference?
I think I can answer the portion of that. What happened is, I know some of those are new vehicles that we received. When we receive the new vehicles, they charge us on tax incentive, or basically, we get the price cut, but we still have to charge, we still get charged tax on that price reduction because we're city council, or city government, sorry. I, the 2,000, I'm not quite sure what that is. I couldn't, let me look at.
I know what that is.
Oh, okay.
2,400, it was two new Ford Fusions. It looks like are two new vehicles that were along with their taxes and fees for the that come with the new vehicles.
And where are those Ford Fusions going?
They're all police department vehicles.
Okay. And then the last one I have is on page nine, where the Globe 1,164. I'm assuming those are the ones that are across there, right there that were busted? Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. Those are the replacements.
So you got the red and green. Why didn't you just get white?
No, those are light bulbs inside. We recently changed them up to white. When we, when they were replaced, we've, we had one of our interns replace it. We got to tell them, they are changed now to white.
Okay, good. They were, they were still Christmas colors when I was up there last. Okay, thank you.
Joni, I see your hand. Go ahead.
On page five, oh, six, page six at the bottom. I'm just curious, all the water bills look really good in the park, and then we have a $523 one on Hootson. Were you filling or something?
Yes, your vector truck. We, that's where we fill the vector trucks, and when we're doing, we clean out sewer lines, that's what we use and we hit the.
Okay. That's all.
Thank you.
Just one quick one for me. On page five, we have a Home Depot charged with primer for the Hillcrest apartments. I know we said we wanted to, to, you know, close that up to protect it, but what's, why does it say primer? We didn't paint for them, did we? $2,700 for what? For Hillcrest? Page five.
Yeah, we painted all of the wood before it went up on the first floor windows.
Wow, okay, that's a lot of primer, 3,000 bucks. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve accounts payable. All those in, do we have a vote? Yes.
Right, councilmember Pollak. Councilmember Giacaminho.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Aye, motion passes seven zero now. All moved. Moving on, approval of the consent agenda, we have two items. Basically, one approval of the minutes and another one for an appointment to the planning zoning commission. Does anyone have desire to speak to either one of these? If not, may I have a motion for, to approve the consent agenda?
I move we approve the consent agenda A and B.
I was not going to.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda, items A and B, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay? Sounds unanimous, so moved. We'll move on to, there's no old business, so let's move into new business. This will be the presentation of our annual audit, and will be presented on, oh, they're coming on board now, I see. So I will turn it over to Carrie to introduce them and let the, let them give us the rundown of how things went last year. Thank you.
Mayor and council, Steve Palmer with Hinton Burdick is here to do the presentation on the audit for FY '20, and I believe Ashley has a presentation, a slideshow.
I'll start sharing my screen right now. All right. Hopefully, everybody can see that now.
There it is. Can everybody, okay? Perfect, thank you. These virtual meetings are a wonderful tool we have during these strange times, but unfortunately, they come with technical difficulties sometimes. So I just wanted to be sure you could hear me, and thank you for having me tonight. It's absolutely my pleasure to take a few minutes to tell you how the fiscal year 2020 audit went and the results of our audit. As Carrie mentioned, my name is Steve Palmer. I'm a partner with Hinton Burdick, and also, as she mentioned, we have recently completed the fiscal year 20 audit. Will you please advance to the next slide? Thank you. In conjunction with our audit, there are three different reports that we are required to issue. The first is the independent auditor's report, and this is where we state whether or not, in layman's terms, the city passed their audit. What you want is an unmodified opinion or a clean opinion. And I'm pleased to report that for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2020, we are able to, able to issue an unmodified or a clean opinion. That means that, in our opinion, the city's financial statements represent fairly the city's financial position at June 30, 2020, and the results of its operations for the year ended on that date. We are also required to issue a report on compliance and on internal control over financial reporting, and I'm very pleased to report that we did not note any items that were required to be reported as a material weakness or a significant deficiency in this area. Excuse me. The third report we issue is on the city's compliance with state legal requirements. And again, I'm pleased to report that we didn't have, didn't note any items requiring us to report findings here. If you'll advance this slide, Ashley. Let's look a little bit at the city's finances, how the year went for fiscal year 20. So at the, at June 30, 2020, the city's net position or equity was, you know, 2.7, 2.8 million dollars. That means that if you were to take all the city's assets, subtract out the liabilities, that residual amount is the equity, 2.7 million. And over time, increases or decreases to this number are a good indication as to whether the financial health of the city is getting better or if it's deteriorating. So for the year ended June 30, 2020, the city's net position decreased by about $5 million. It was an interesting year, largely due to the big change that the city saw in their net pension liability. You may recall that several years ago, governmental auditing, or excuse me, governmental accounting standards required that we put the net pension liability on the balance sheet. This year, due to instant personnel market performance, a whole myriad of reasons, the city's net pension liability went up significantly. It went up enough that it caused us to cause, call the actuary, the people that actually determine that amount, and ask them to look at their computations to make sure there wasn't a mistake. They went through and they told us that it was a direct result of the changes in primarily public safety, police officers, and and the changes in positions there that caused that to, to that liability to increase so significantly. So anyway, long story short, that's the reason the city's net position decreased in the amount that it did. That's the overriding factor. Will you advance it to the next slide, Ashley? So let's look at the the general fund a little bit. The bottom line, the pink line is liabilities, the top line is assets, and the line in the, in between those two is the fund's equity. You can see that the general fund has a pretty healthy fund balance, but about $2 million that fund balance has been committed for the construction of city hall. It was monies that came in after the fire that the city has been holding in reserves for future use for city hall. That's why the fund balance is so high in the general fund. Will you advance the slide to the next one, Ashley? And here is the cash trend for the general fund. You can see that spike when the insurance proceeds come, came in, and then it's, it's gone down a little bit for fiscal year 20. And if you'll advance to the next slide. This is the income statement for the general fund. You can, in the general fund, over time, you expect revenues and expenditures to roughly mirror one another. The general fund is not in business, so to speak, to turn a profit. So you expect revenues and expenditures to be roughly the same. In 2018, we saw the, the proceed, the insurance proceeds come in that caused that spike in revenues. Otherwise, the fund looks just how we would expect it to be, with revenues and expenditures mirroring one another. You'll advance to the next slide, Ashley. Okay, these are the enterprise funds. The enterprise funds are reported on the full accrual basis of accounting. This would be the city's utilities that you provide. These funds report depreciation expense, they report the capital assets on the balance sheet, the debt is right on the face of the balance sheet, and as a general rule, you would expect the enterprise funds to have revenues in excess of expenditures in order to provide future resources when utility systems need to be upgraded, replaced, significant repairs, those kinds of things. So those are the, the utility funds or the enterprise funds. You'll advance the slide, Ashley. So here's the wastewater fund. You can see that expenses have outpaced revenues in this fund over the past five years. That is largely due to depreciation, as we'll be able to see on the next slide when we look at the cash. If you'll advance to the next slide. You can see that overall cash has been stable for the past three years. In 2018, the city had some, some, some excess cash in the fund, so you used it to pay down debt, and after that, you can see that the cash has been quite stable, even though the fund has reported a net loss due to the depreciation expense. Next slide, Ashley. Here's the sanitation fund. You can see the past five years, revenues have exceeded rep, expenses at 190,000. In 2016 and 2017, expenses exceeded revenues, but over the past three years, we've seen that trend reverse. And that gap, that net income is, is really the goal in an enterprise fund, so that you're able to provide cushion or provide resources, as a better word, for future services. If you'll advance the slide one more, and here's the cash trend in the sanitation fund. You can see that 2016 through 2018, the fund did not report any cash, but over the past two years, you can see it's, it's filled up a, a bit of a reserve in cash, which is a very positive trend. The next slide, Ashley. And here's Queen Mine. The Queen Mine Fund has consistently shown net income, but we all know what happened in 2020. With COVID, the operations were cut back significantly, so in 2020, expenditures outpaced revenues by a small margin. But again, given COVID, that's, that's not a surprise, and unfortunately, it's the reality. And then the next slide, Ashley. And here's the cash trend for, for Queen Mine as well. You can see cash dipped a little bit because of those decreases in revenues in 2020. And the next slide. I just want to take a moment to express my thanks to Carrie and everybody in the finance department, really, everybody in the city. When we go through the audit process, it is, we try to make it as, as painless as possible, but there's still pain, so to speak. We ask a lot of questions, we ask for a lot of documents, and your staff has been very responsive, and we really appreciate them providing us all the information we need to, to complete the audit timely and accurately. And the last slide, Ashley. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to take those. If questions come to mind at a later date, here's my contact information. Carrie certainly has it as well. And if you have any questions or concerns at any time through the year, I would certainly encourage you to reach out to me, and I'm, and I'm happy to help however I can. And with that, I'll, I'll open it up to any questions you may have.
All right, thank you, Stephen. Questions? I have a couple, but I'd like to give everybody else, anybody have any questions on what they saw in this? Well, I'll start off, if I might, I, I imagine you have a report in front of you. So just, just to verify for the public and myself, on page 21, the committed was what you talked about, the 2.1 was what was set aside for city hall.
Right.
That's right?
That's correct.
So then I went down as far as, I got to get to page 79. I guess what stuck out to me was where in that amount does it show the CARES Act money that we saved, the $610,000? Is that somewhere in this balance area here?
I don't have, I actually don't have the report right in front of me, but Carrie, please correct me if I'm wrong, if I'm incorrect, but I believe we deferred the majority of the CARES Act money, or the city deferred that money, is that correct?
We actually, we received it in the, the current fiscal year, but we accrued it to last fiscal year against the public safety expenses last year.
Thank you. So the CARES Act monies were used to pay for public safety wages.
Right, it was rolled into the general fund, and of course, picked up that. And so I was looking for where it showed up, and I thought it would show up on, on, on page 79, but if you roll it down to 80, you will see that basically, we, we ended up with a fund balance of $86,000 in the, for general fund, in the positive for the year.
Yeah, so basically, so basically, how that will work is that revenue will come in as an intergovernmental revenue, and then it was in salaries and wages in the, in the, in the expense account, so there's no residual amount at the end. It, it was all utilized.
Exactly, and it made our balance $86,000 in the, in the improvement, but had, had we not got $1010,000 from CARES, we would have been basically $524,000 in the negative for the year, if you just took that out of the equation.
Yes, that's accurate.
That's what I was trying to find out and, and kind of get down on page 79 and 80, because that's where the, that's where the two show up, and I just wanted to see that it was actually somehow put in there so that people can realize, you know, that CARES Act helped us out a lot by covering public safety, but it also, because public safety's in general fund, it brought a negative balance up to a positive balance.
Yes, you're, you're, you're absolutely correct, yes.
Okay, that's, one thing I thought would be something to take a note for future budget considerations, we don't always get a bunch of federal CARES Act money coming.
Thank, thank goodness, right?
Thank goodness, I wish it would, but.
Yeah, but not under these circumstances, right?
Not under these circumstances, so that's my only question. Does anybody else have anything?
I've got one.
Go ahead.
When you were going through the slides, you said that, was it sanitation that hadn't supplied reports for three years out of the last five? Why is that?
So I had a little bit of heart, I had a little bit of trouble hearing you, but were you asking about the cash balance in the sanitation fund?
No, why they had not submitted reports for three of the last five years.
Oh, I didn't, I, I did not report that. You must have misheard me, or, or I'm, I don't know.
Slide.
I'm not aware of any instances where the sanitation fund did not submit reports. Did I hear you correctly?
Okay, that's what the slide said, and I, I can't see the slide now, so.
When I was doing the sanitation fund, I discussed that over the past three years, revenues have exceeded expenditures, which is a positive trend. And that also, over the past two years, the fund has reported a positive cash balance, where in previous years, that hadn't been the case. But I, but I didn't speak to any reports for the sanitation fund.
Right. If you the PowerPoint that, Ashley, you have a copy, correct?
I do, I can also go back to it if you guys would like.
Yeah, we, let, let's go back to that slide and see.
Sure, just give me one second.
It's like the third slide, because it shows a flat line and it showed it going up.
Um, let's see.
It'll be toward the end, here we go.
Yeah, it was towards the end.
I'm sorry?
Oh, go to.
I think it's like the third slide, because it's.
Those are all the.
Go down.
Flat line and it showed it going up.
I think, I think where your question is coming from.
I think we're already, yeah, we're well into it.
Good. That slide, it stated the sanitation fund has not reported any cash balances for three of the past five years. That, I, I believe that's what you're referring to. It's not, it's just because the fund did not have any cash. In fact, they had overspent the amount of cash they had and had to borrow money from other funds. So as opposed, instead of having a cash balance, they showed an amount due to other funds. They, they had no cash of their own, in essence. I think it's the very next, or the slide before this one, Ashley. The one after, I'm sorry. That one right there. So that's why, basically, in 2016, 2017, and 2018, the fund had spent all the cash that they had. And, and that trend reversed in 2019 and 2020, where the fund has actually been accumulating cash. And, and that trend reversed in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, where the fund has actually been accumulating cash.
It's interesting.
If, if I might, didn't, it didn't actually owe, didn't it actually owe the general fund some money back? And that has had to be made up, is.
That's, that's correct.
That's what I thought, okay. So yeah, it was in the negative and so when it starts to turn positive, that money then is, is, it borrowed from the general fund and had to pay it back. I think that was.
That's correct.
That was in last year's budget, I think.
Yeah, that is correct. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other hands? Well, I want to thank you. I've been here for a number, well, I was here a number of years before and some of these went on for over an hour. I think you covered it well, uh, looks like there's not very many questions and, but, and I appreciate your ability, if I have more, I could contact you later. But I would like to say that it seems like with no findings, that's what we're always after and, and we hope so. That's, that's what happened and we would be able to give this out to anybody to say we're, we're financially okay at this point, so.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, moving on. We have agenda item number four. This is discussion of possible approval of the notice of intent to adopt ordinance O dash twenty one dash oh four. This is an ordinance of the mayor and the city council. For increasing the trans, transatic room tax, bed tax basically from the two point five to five percent. This, of course, was passed by the voters and uh. Go ahead, Carrie, I guess it's pretty straightforward, but I'll let you say anything you want.
Yes, um, you pretty much said the same thing I was going to say. It's just a notice of intent to adopt the ordinance to increase the bed tax. The public hearing and ordinance will come at the next council meeting. This increase was already approved by the voters and ratified by the council. But a public hearing and the ordinance is still required.
Great, any questions or comments from anyone? Sooner we get this there and sooner COVID lets us loose, then maybe we'll be able to get a little more bed tax back, so that would be great, so. Do I have a motion that we approve this uh, notice of intent from somebody?
I move to approve the notice of intent to adopt ordinance. O dash twenty one dash oh four, adopting the increase to the transit room tax from two point five percent to five, or two point, yeah, two point five percent. To five percent effective March one, twenty twenty one.
Again.
Thank you, Joan, thank you, Leslie, we have a motion and a second to approve. The notice of intent for ordinance O dash twenty one dash oh four. Have a vote, please.
Councilmember Pollock?
Aye.
Councilmember Giacomo?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Klein? Mayor Budge?
Aye. Motion passes seven zero, so moved. We'll see it again next two weeks. Okay. Click open to item five. This is a move to approve a notice of intent to adopt ordinance O dash twenty one dash oh one to rezone. Uh, parcel number one oh three, six, two, four, eight, nine, which is sixty Main Street. From R one to CM two. Do uh, Joe, I guess you get to tell us why.
If this is a, this a um, intent to rezone this pass unanimously passed through the Planning and Zoning Commission. And um, the, the property is a really small little piece of property, right now you see the Get Some Burger. Trailer up on there. And um, we, we need to legitimize for also the use of the property there as commercial. But it's um, it's really not residential property sitting on the edge there and who, nobody's going to live there and it's too small. But there are some commercial uses that are legitimate that can, that can be used for. And don't, don't get this, um, turn this into a referendum on Get Some Burgers, because that's a, that's a temporary situation. When you're, when you have a mobile kitchen like that, but the, um, the land itself is, is going to be there and it, it um. It's right to turn it to convert it over to, to where it can be used for commercial purposes.
Okay, comments, questions from anybody?
Mayor, just as a, I, item of uh. This is also needs to be done as a public hearing, so you should have opened a public hearing, take any public comments, close a public hearing. Separate from the, uh, any motion to approve the notice of intent.
Exactly, I just brought out my sheet. Thank you. So. I guess what I'll do right now is open the uh. Public hearing on this, since so, we don't have any public in front of us, we'll, I'll ask if we've had any coordination from. Anybody that has signed up to speak in, first uh, in uh. Opponents to this motion.
No, sir, we've received nothing.
Okay, and then I'll ask for anybody that has made any attempt to. Of the public to be in favor of this.
No, we received nothing in favor.
And so we have no written communications of any type.
Correct.
All right, I'll close this public hearing at this time. Now I'll go into discussions, thank you, Joe, and I saw Joe, was it Jones' hand went up? Yes, thank you.
I, I just wanted to clarify exactly where this is, is this in the, the Bisbee parking lot up against the. Where the, that little white house is that has other names?
That's exactly where it is, Joan.
Okay. It was, it was hard to tell because they had Bisbee Royale on the other side of the street.
Yeah, it's just a little sliver of land there, it's not very big.
It's not very big, yeah.
Right.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Just quickly, Joe, I, oh, go ahead, Anna.
So have they been operating without the proper permits or?
They've been operating without the proper zoning.
And how long have they been doing this?
Maybe six weeks.
Okay, so why hasn't this come before us earlier?
It takes a while to get these things through the process. It has to be, there's notifications that are sent out, goes to Planning and Zoning Commission. And they have to, when their meeting happens and then it came to you immediately after that. It's just, it's just a timeframe that is um, you know, how government works, it, it doesn't move very fast.
Well, I think they should have the proper permitting and everything in place prior to opening up for business. And the city should, as the building inspector and enforcement, I would think that uh. It should have come before us. Earlier.
All right. Thank you, Anna, um. I, I did know that it's, it's only eleven hundred square feet. I don't know what can be built on when you start considering setbacks and so on. So um, I don't think this is going to affect much one way or the other, but um. It would have to be an awfully small, whatever commercial building could be put on eleven hundred square feet. But with all that being said, I'm, it went through the planning zoning, it did get approval, they, they held a public meeting, uh, we just did. So I guess the next thing I would question is. Any other? Anything, anybody else have anything or would somebody like a motion to approve uh, this rezoning?
I move to approve the notice of intent to adopt ordinance O dash two one dash oh one. To rezone APN one oh three dash six two dash four eight nine, sixty Main Street owned by Maria Masaro from R one to CM two.
A second now.
All right, we have a motion from Lou and a second from Frank. To approve the notion of intent to approve ordinance O dash twenty one dash oh one. I have a vote, please, thank you.
Councilmember Pollock?
Aye.
Councilmember Giacomo?
Yes. Aye!
Thank you, Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Aye, aye!
Uh, Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Budge?
Aye, motion passes unanimously, so moved. You gotta love Zoom, don't you? All right. Let's move on to item number six, gotta keep lighthearted, this is, we gotta look through this. Item number six, which is another zoning situation. This is a public hearing and discussion on possible approval of a notice of intent. To adopt ordinance O dash twenty one dash oh two to rezone parcel number one oh two fifteen dash oh five seven, which is at three oh two South Washington Avenue. This is owned by the city of Bisbee. This will be zoned from commercial C two to RM, mixed residential. Go ahead, Joe.
Okay, we've got a, we've got an excess inventory of commercial property. We have a potential of, um, developing that property for low income. Housing there and um, in order to do that, we needed to, we needed to change the, the um. The zoning on it, the um. With by RM, the reason for that is because RM is pretty wide open zoning, it allows most all of the residential uses. And um, enables us to um. To find the best, the best fit there. And um, the property is exactly an acre and it's right there in the, at the south end of South Washington. And um, it'll be, it'd be a good place for. For um, housing and I recommend that you pass this ordinance.
Okay, with this, I'll open a public hearing on this uh. Motion to a notice of intent to adopt this ordinance O dash twenty one oh two. Public meeting is open. I'll ask for any discussion or members of the public that have asked to be, say anything for, in favor of this motion.
We have none.
Okay, I'll close that, anybody have, has made any attempt to make a discussion or given us anything as a proponent of this ordinance?
Again, we, we have none.
And no written communications that I.
Correct.
All right, with that, sounds like the public has spoken and I will close the public hearing. And then I'll ask for discussion, any, by the council, any questions and. Opinions, discussions. So I do have one and, and I know before I became mayor, this was considered at one time someplace to put City Hall as a one, one uh. Acre parcel. Joe, would that eliminate going to RM? I always hate going downward, it's much harder, it's, it's easier to go down than it is to go up when you try to, to make things more commercial, but I'm just wondering. Would this inhibit this effort to be used for anything other than residential?
I don't think it would, Ken, I'm sorry, I don't think, I don't think that it would can because um. We just, we just voted, we just um. Passed agenda item five. The um, I think that if we wanted, if we did want to put City Hall there, that um, we'd be right back where we are today and we'd be changing the zoning. And I'd be recommending that too, so.
Okay, Joni, I see your hand, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Kind of.
Can you hear me? No. Okay, wasn't that the property that at one time they thought about putting low income housing? For seniors?
Was that, I think your question was, we were considering this for low income housing, is, was that your question, Joni?
Yes, sir.
You're kind of frozen. I'm not hearing.
I think that's what she was asking, Ken.
I think that's why we're changing.
I don't know what's going on. I don't know what's going on.
Yeah, so I think. I think this was to down, downzone it so we could go out and sell it for some type of uh, housing versus commercial. If I'm correct, correct me, Joe, if I'm wrong.
You're right.
Yep. I just wanted to make sure that we weren't eliminating our ability to, to maybe actually sell it as commercial, which is always worth more than, than residential, but. I, I, I know where it's at, it's uh, you know, behind the. The tire shop and so on. It backs pretty close to some property that the city also owns and some other stuff, so. It does have all the utilities there, am I right, Joe, I believe it has.
They don't build but the property line.
Yeah, so it has, it has good potential, so we should try to do whatever we can to get the best potential out of it. And uh, and definitely we could use um, an area for, for housing, I'm sure. I see a smile, Leslie, is. See, I'm good at seeing things anyway. No other comments, all right, I'm gonna call for a vote then, this will be a vote on the notice of intent to adopt ordinance O dash twenty one dash oh two. Go ahead, uh, Ashley, thank you.
I don't think we have a motion yet.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
I move to approve the notice of intent to adopt ordinance zero two one zero oh, oh, oh two. To rezone APN one zero two dash fifteen zero five seven, three zero two, South Washington Avenue. Owned by the city of Bisbee from C dash two to RM.
A second.
All right, again, we have a motion by Frank and a second by Joe, thank you very much. These public hearings are getting tough on me, I guess, anyway, thank you, everybody, and now I think we can, I can ask for a vote, thank you, Ashley.
Councilmember Pollock?
Aye.
Councilmember Giacomo? Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Klein? Mayor Budge?
Aye, motion passes, I believe six one, I wasn't quite sure if I heard.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you, motion so moved. So, motion of, of, okay. All right, moving on to item, agenda number seven. This will be a public hearing, discussion of possible approval of a notice of intent, again, to adopt. O dash twenty one dash oh three, amending article five point three point two, special provisions for the historic district. By adding five point three point two B one D. Establishing the right to rebuild utilizing the setbacks of demolished or burnt structures in the same parcel in the historic. In Bisbee Historic District. That was a long one, Joe. You gotta make it shorter, thanks. Go ahead.
The um, this has been, this has been considered a right up, up for, for long as I've been here. But then there wound up, there was some conflicting verbiage that was found in the zoning code that led us to not allow this to happen. And so we're trying to, by putting it specifically into the, into the um, the historic district provisions to be, to enable the rebuilding. Cause some of these properties are really small and they're kind of peculiar in how they are. And um, the setbacks are kind of wonky, so if we, if we enable them to build back in the original, they're still gonna have to be able, build fireproof by the. The way that the building codes are and the closer the setbacks are, the more fireproof the building has to be, but. But um it's gonna enable people to use some of these parcels that right now, but if we don't allow that, it makes them pretty much unused, some of them unusable. I think, I think I, I recommend that you pass this ordinance.
Did this go before DRB or P and Z or?
P and Z passed unanimously.
Okay. Really quickly before I, just a second, Frank, I just gotta ask why it's on top of my head. So how do we prove what was the footprint there before? Because some of these buildings have been gone for decades. Or does, and you know, where does that determination come from?
There'd have to be proof. You've either got foundations in many cases and um there's just, there's so many historic photographs that um it's used a lot in the, in the district.
So, okay.
It has to be proof, not speculation.
Yeah, I, I would wonder if that would, should be part of what this uh thing might want to say, because somebody could say, well, I know there was a building there and anyway, it's, it's, it could be subjective to some situations. Anyway, Frank, I saw, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I, I feel we should pass this. DRB's been working under this assumption for, for years. And it is a situation in old Bisbee where there's old buildings that have come down. And usually it is quite obvious where the old foundations were. So it's, 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 it's pretty hard to, to miss them.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? I do remember as, as my time on DRB that, that I thought the DRB was allowed to, you know, find a finding of fact and not have those setbacks that were normally in code if they have a finding of fact of similar or like buildings in the area.
Right.
Does, does this overcompensate that one, Joe? You know what I'm saying?
It complements it.
Complements.
Because, you know, actually what, what you're allowed to do with the, with the um DRB is you're allowed to adjust the front and the rear setbacks, but you know you're not allowed to adjust the side.
Really?
Yeah, but I know, none of us, yeah, me too. Reading carefully, it's like, oops, but we've got, we've um, we were gonna close up some of these loopholes, but the um and so that's currently what, what we're doing and trying to, trying to make it so that these, these lots will be buildable.
Infill's important, so we want to continue to try and do that and still meet the fire code. All right. Questions? Comments? All right, can I have my motion?
I move to approve the notice of intent to adopt ordinance O dash twenty dash oh three, amending article five point three point two, special provisions for the historic district by adding five point three point two B one D, establishing the right to rebuild, utilizing the setbacks of a demolished or burnt structure on the same parcel in the Bisbee Historic District. My second.
All right.
You can have the second, Frank.
Mayor's a, we do the public hearing. Oops.
Does, this need a public hearing?
It's agenda for a public hearing.
Aye, 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 aye. I'm sorry, I didn't see that.
We can still, we can still leave the, the motion and second is fine. We can still leave that, just open, open and hold a public hearing, then close it and then call, roll count.
Oh, there it is, held a public hearing. Thank you. Well, no, the planning, zoning held a public hearing. I didn't see that we were to hold a public hearing. Um but I'll go with our attorney. Alrighty, so the mayor will open this to a public hearing to pass notice of intent to adopt ordinance O dash twenty dash oh three. I'm gonna ask if we've had any uh members of the public that are in support of this motion.
I have none.
And I will ask anybody that, from members of the public that have been in opposition to this motion or to this, um, yeah, notice of intent to adopt ordinance.
No, we have none.
So, in other words, no written, one way.
Correct, none at all.
Alrighty. So we've helped, opened, I'm gonna close the public hearing. This time we do now have a motion and a second on the floor to approve notice of intent to adopt ordinance O dash twenty dash oh three. That's all I'm gonna say about that one. And I'll call for a roll call.
Councilmember Pollak? Councilmember Giacominno?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Budge?
Aye, motion passes seven zero unanimous, so moved, so, so moved. All right, a lot of this stuff tonight. You really loaded us up, Joe. So we'll move on to council agenda item number eight. Discussion and possible approval of a public auction for the transfer of certain city property located on lots nineteen and twenty, primarily south of and across the right of way from one twenty-five Star Avenue Bisbee and the establishment of a minimum price. This is the number that we had, uh read to us the letter from James Terry. So I want you to go ahead, Joe, and if you can um speak to his questions, that'd be great.
Mr. Terry's question really doesn't have anything to do with this because they're talking about the sewer going up to his property. And um, this is, this is, you know, a quarter mile from his property. I mean, it's not very far away, but this has nothing to do with his sewer. The sewer, I don't think it's sewer crossing, but if it does then um we should establish, we should establish easement across the proper, the property to be able to bring Mr. Terry his sewer.
Well, can I ask real quickly, does that, there is still a road. Basically Star Avenue will go all up and they could, we, you could put a, a sewer line in the city property. It doesn't have to cross private property. Is that not correct?
It doesn't necessarily have to, no.
It'd be quicker to go over somebody's lot, I'm sure. But it doesn't, it doesn't uh impale him from being able to move a line down from his place if he so desired.
What they were looking at, at um running that line was the properties that had burned in the fire there in May of, what, seventeen? Um, probably not, probably nineteen or eighteen, but the um, whichever, you know, which I mean, the, when we had the fire up there. But the um, it's, it would be those properties that burned that, that he would need to have access across. But it, but if it entails these, I, I totally um agree with them that he would need a legal easement across the prop, but I don't think these properties are affected that way.
All right, questions from people? Go ahead, Lou.
Joe, this is for you. About a year ago, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe this came before planning and zoning. And I believe Mr. Terry had offered to in, pay for the installation of the sewer versus having a septic system put in. Is that, is that correct? Do you remember that?
Yes, that is exactly correct, Lou.
Is he still planning on paying for that sewer installation?
Well, from what I heard, it sounds like he'd like us to pay for the sewers, but that's not generally what we do.
Right, understood. Okay, thank you.
There was an offer. I thought that if he put in the sewer, then he could get, there would be a credit towards purchasing other property that he wanted. We did that once, I remember up on High Road a, a number of years ago, but I, I just want to make sure that if there's a lot of lots up there and if we can, some point, put sewer up there, that's gonna create a lot of infill. So I just want to make sure we're not cutting ourselves out by selling this property and something that we will need is a future easement in order to, to get a uh probably not us put a sewer line in, but if somebody else wanted to develop that property up there, they would have to, so that's.
The property that we're talking about, Ken, is it has, it has a right of way there on the north side of it that runs all the way up and through the, the burnt property. You can't tell where it's at because they built over the top of it. We have a right of way that goes all the way up to Williams there, and I would assume that that would be utilized for the sewer.
Long as, that's what I thought. As long as there's a, a basically Star Avenue will continue if we're gonna call it Star, even though it's dirt probably up there, then yeah. I rode up there and it was pretty rough, but it's, you know, it, it is a beautiful canyon if we could, if they decide to develop it, but we, they would need to get sewer, so. Okay, I've said my piece. Who else? Anybody else? All right, I don't see anything else. So we need to set a minimum price before this goes. That's correct, right?
Now, Ken, what we, or mayor and council, we had um talked before about the same property and then, and then tabled it because um there was a lot next door that was, if not a very desirable lot, it's really steep and it goes down there and it's bisected by a waterway. But um, so I added it onto it with a, with a much reduced price for that, so it brought the, the, the price per square foot of all of it down to a dollar thirty-three a square foot, but since there's gonna be a public auction, the property will sell for its, its true value, because there's been, there's been a, a lot of interest in it, I believe. But Mr. Ayers has been very cooperative with us and I do appreciate that in, in adding this to it. And um it's a win-win situation for us, but a dollar thirty-three square foot, when, when I added on the other property that was less valuable, is what it can, what I was recommending.
Okay, so we lowered the overall price per square foot because a piece was included that really wasn't a usable building lot or whatever. Is that what? But I do believe this is a notice of intent, so we have to produce a minimum price that we'll put it out for auction at the next level. So whoever makes the motion, that would be your motion on that number first. Go ahead, Joni. You have your.
Question. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Do we not have a set amount that we go by instead of this property is this much per square foot, this property? I don't care if it's undesirable, it's still property. I don't understand why we have such a fluctuation in what we charge for different lots.
Different, different places have different values, Joni. The um, you know, it's like, there's another property we're gonna talk about in a little while that's, that I'm recommending, five dollars a square foot, but um.
So, how are you, how are you deciding what the value is?
Based upon, so many times, the location out close proximity, proximity to a right of way. Um, proximity to downtown, there's very, there's a lot of factors that, that come into that. But in this case, it is just a place to start since it's gonna go to a public auction.
So what we're saying is a minimum bid, nobody can bid under this. I'll give you a little background. I bought some property years ago from Phelps Dodge, when Phelps Dodge was in charge. And we price it out, when it's closer to the street, it's X number of dollars, when you get up to A level is so much, B level is so much, and C. And that's basically how all of their, they did theirs and I don't know what, I'm not a real estate agent, so I don't know what it, what, you know, lots go for, but it's, it is based on what somebody's willing to pay. We just want to make sure that the price we're setting is uh, is, is reasonable that somebody could possibly bid on it, but we're not giving it away, I would think, would be, would be the, a wise way to think of it. I'm hoping that's what, the way you priced it. Out of this big piece, there's not that much that's buildable or doable. The other part is just mountainside, which is not worth very much, except for it's something we couldn't resell to somebody else and them, them have it usables. Am I right, Joe? I think that's the way I looked at it, when I looked at it.
That's exactly right.
Okay, so we have six thousand square feet of property. It's not even a quarter of an acre, it's one point one four. Still pretty good size for old Bisbee, but um, does somebody want to make a motion or I will?
I move that we authorize a public auction, the transfer of the designated surplus city property located at lots nineteen and twenty, primarily south and across the right of way from one twenty-five Star Avenue Bisbee, set a minimum price bid of seven thousand nine hundred eighty for this property.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Frank, a second by Leslie who set a minimum price for lots nineteen and twenty, one twenty-five Star Avenue for a minimum price, which is a power thirty-three per square foot. So, which equals seven thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars. I have a vote, please. Ashley?
Councilmember Pollak? Councilmember Giacominno? Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Klein? Mayor Budge?
Aye. Motion passes five two. So moved. On to item number nine. This is another discussion and possible approval of a public auction for the transfer of certain property located primarily south of Commerce Street and east of the city parking lot on Main Street Bisbee and establishing a minimum price. Go ahead, Joe.
This had started with, um, somebody was interested in, in um, setting up and in proposing this auction. And um, the time was short and so we, we um, I didn't realize that it hadn't been paid for. And I advertised it, so as long as we advertise it, I said, hey, we're gonna, we're gonna try to sell this property. And it's a really small piece of property. Again, you can see it's um seven hundred and thirty-one square feet. It's, it's not very big. It's like a parking space. There are some other uses that could be done with it, but you'd have to be really creative. But the point is, it's doing us no good. We're land poor. And um if we can, if we can sell that property, we'll be that much further ahead, not in necessarily collecting the money, but getting this onto the tax rules. Over time, it, it all amounts to a lot of money, so um I recommend that you um approve this, this um auction of the surplus property.
All right. Questions? Go ahead, Lou.
Joe, was it a unanimous vote by the P and Z?
Yes, it was.
Thank you.
It was.
I did go up and look this. This is of course a piece right there next to the Bisbee parking lot. In order to utilize it, you would have to build a wall really to get deep enough to there's been a Jeep parked there for many years, one of the, one of the owners of a business downtown kind of parks it up on the hill. And there's a, I think there's a telephone pole stuck right in the middle of it, so I don't know what it's worth, Joe, but um the other thing, question I had, you're, you're pretty sure that there's, because our main drainage ditch runs right under Commerce. This wouldn't affect us in any way. Somebody tried to build something. We don't want anything even close to our, to that drainage ditch, because there's not much holding that. Is, are we, have you checked that out and made sure? Or haysewes? Do you know that as a fact? I don't want to sell something that has a partial drainage or right next to our, our main drainage.
It is, it is next to the drain, Ken, but um if anybody were to build it, and I don't think they ever will, their, their people are primarily that I, there's a lot of people called me about it, that they were interested in obtaining parking, there are shopkeepers around there. But um if there were, they would, they would not be able to surcharge on our ditch, so they would have to put pilings down that, that were lower than the ditch, so it wasn't affecting our ditch at all. It would be independently held up.
Okay, I just want to protect that. Go ahead, Anna.
So, Joe, this is the property that uh the previous owner of the grand had a vacation rental on, correct?
That's what they, they told me. I don't remember it, but I was here during that period, but I.
It was like a tiny house, I remember.
I don't remember.
They were encroaching on city property, so that's when they switched the property that we rezoned earlier where the burger place is. And that was the, that was the swap. So whoever is looking at this, are they looking to build a home or what are their plans?
There, everybody that talked to me about it was interested in parking.
And how?
I don't think, I don't think it has any value to build upon, Anna.
It's about 22 feet deep if I remember looking at it and about 20 feet wide, something like that. Correct me if I'm wrong, Joe, just off my memory. But.
Yeah, it's the neighborhood of that. It's.
So in order to get a car there, you would have to actually push into the mountain and possibly build some sort of wall to hold the land up above, which is the other person's property and, and where they park. So that's, looks like a tough place to build, but land seems to be worth a lot in our little town lately, so.
There's no telling what people will do.
I don't know about the $5 a square foot. Okay, go ahead, Joni.
Um, you said there's a telephone pole in the middle of it?
There's one right there. It's a big metal pole that APS put in. You could have it moved, but it's going to cost you, I'm sure. That's why I see a lot of problems.
So since this one is not a whole lot that you can do with it, why is it so much higher priced?
Well, mainly because it's parking spaces and that's, if you figured that out, I imagine that would be whatever somebody wants to pay for a private parking place if they, if they live downtown or they, they, you know, had a business, I guess.
If you guys would like to, to be started at a lower price, it's, it's nothing to me. I just think, I think $5 is reasonable price to start at, but that's, if you disagree with me, propose a lower number, that'd be okay.
Oh, I think it should be worth more. Anyway, it's a tough spot, but yet it is prime. I mean, this is cheap property. Two parking places, you know, if you, if you made it, they could be worth seven, eight thousand apiece. So go ahead, Lou.
We're going to sell a public parking place to a private owner. That concern was raised to me by a person who's on the Planning and Zoning Commission, not as a objection to doing this, but just as a point of interest for everybody. Know what we're doing here because we might set a precedent that we later regret.
Joni, go ahead.
So kind of along that line, why aren't we making it into more parking since we're so short?
Well, I went down and looked at it and really what it is, is the hill has fallen down. Correct if I'm wrong, but it's, whoever's parking there now is just pulling up onto the hillside and their back of their car kind of hangs a little bit in the Commerce Street. So there's basically one spot because the telephone pole takes the other. And in order to make a really flat actual place to park, you would have to, you know, take out the, the part that has, has sloughed down, build something to retain the wall behind. So to me, it's an expensive bill. We as a city to gain that would, we would spend more money that would be worth for us to produce it, but maybe for a private party. I can't say, but you know, I, I don't see it as anything that we could ever use, as long as we don't need it to protect ourselves for the drainage ditch or some other reason. That's just my feeling, but you know, I'm willing to go with whatever everybody wants. It's not.
And I did ask Hesus Haro and George Castillo and Albert Echave if, what their thoughts were on it. And they were all positive about selling it, that it wouldn't, that wouldn't harm the city's interest.
If we had the money, we could get two more spots, but, but I don't think it's worth our, our money could be better spent somewhere else to get more parking than, than that little tiny spot, in my opinion. Anyway. Yes, Lou, go ahead. Lou?
I, I don't like the precedent that this might set. However, I like the idea of the parcel being put on the tax rolls. So I just wanted to say those before I cast my vote.
Okay. Well, would somebody want to make a motion and set a minimum price? I have a motion.
I move that we authorize a public auction for the transfer of the designated surplus city property located primarily south of Commerce Street and east of the city parking lot on Main Street Bisbee, and set a minimum bid price of $3,655 for this property.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion from Lou, a second from Frank, to authorize a public auction for a piece of property just south of Commerce Street, east of the city parking lot on Main Street. Could I have a vote? I said at a, a minimum price of $5 a square foot or $3,655. Go ahead, Ashley.
Councilmember Pollock. Councilmember Giacominio. Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson. Mayor Pro Tem Klein. Mayor Budge.
Aye. Was that two names?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Five to seven. Motion so passes. So moved. All right. Moving forward. Item 10. This is a discussion of possible approval of amended one, amendment one to the 5311 grant agreement. This is the bus grant between the state of Arizona and the city of Bisbee. This is yours, Hesus, I believe.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. So this amendment is in that the 5311 grant is, is our bus system. This amendment is actually to the CARES money that we are receiving from them. ADOT has asked to have an amendment. There, there's wording that violates that if we get funding from other sources, that we basically can't use CARES grants to double. So it's some, some wording to, to clean that up. That's, that's all I really have. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions from anybody? I would have got to be glad to get this off my plate. They've been sending me emails for days saying, you need to sign this. I can't do it yet. All right, I don't see any questions or comments. Could I have a motion, please?
I move to approve amendment number one to the 5311 grant amendment between the state of Arizona and the city of Bisbee.
Snack it.
All right, we have a motion from Frank, a second from Lou, to approve this amendment one to the, to our 5311 grant agreement with the state of Arizona. This is a regular, I'll just call for a vote, simple.
Councilmember Pollock.
Aye.
Councilmember Giacominio.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Aye. Motion passes seven zero. So moved. Onward, item number 11. Discussion of possible approval of the notice of intent to adopt ordinance O-21-05, accepting the transfer of real property from Southeast Arizona Renovations LLC located at 202 San Jose Drive, 205 Fort Wachuka Lane and 1 Cochise Row in Bisbee. City manager Coleman, go ahead, Teresa.
Yes, thank you. Hopefully you can hear me okay. So actually, there will be certainly an amendment. The property at 202 San Jose Drive went to auction today. And the philanthropist who's offering the property to the city was not the successful bidder. But will be pursuing the opportunity to obtain the property at 205 Fort Wachuka Lane. And this philanthropist already has title to 1 Cochise Row in Bisbee. And they are interested in transferring these properties to the city to expand the workforce housing initiative.
Questions? Comments? One quick question, Teresa is, so do we have a plan on how we're, who's going to rehab them or how we're going to do, put it into workforce housing yet or just?
Yes. So the workforce housing initiative is a memorandum of understanding between the city of Bisbee and Step Up Bisbee Naco. So that is how they would be rehabilitated.
Just want to get that clarified for myself and the public.
Thank you.
Any other? Joe, go ahead.
This is for the city manager. Teresa is, which was, which one had already been auctioned off?
202 San Jose Drive went to auction. Yeah, went to auction today.
Uh, I saw Hannah and Joni disappeared, I think. Joni, you're there?
Can you hear me?
Kind of.
Yeah. So what are these, what are these, these are going to be those affordable housing that we supposedly have available? Is that what these are going for?
It's for the workforce housing initiative. We have one property right now that has been rehabilitated and we are advertising that property at this time.
And who qualifies for workforce?
Right now, the focus is on essential workers, folks that it would benefit the community to keep in the community. Educators, government workers, first responders, police, and anyone in the medical percussion.
So I guess my, my question is, and I guess my concern is, the last one that we had that came up that was supposed to be termed affordable, they had to have a chunk of change down to even get into it, which isn't affordable. Is that what's going to happen with these also?
Are they going to be sold? So it's workforce, it's the workforce housing initiative. And a down payment would be required depending on the type of mortgage that they obtained. So if they went with a VA loan, that's even less money down FHA, maybe a little bit more. USDA, I understand, doesn't require any down payment or a conventional loan through one of our local banks would be 20% down. So there are many financing options available.
That answer your question, Joni?
Yes and no.
Okay. Anybody else? More questions? So I'm going to ask you really quick, Teresa. So when we make, whoever makes this motion, we would leave 202 San Jose Drive off or not?
You could, yes, you could do that because it will not be part of your final ordinance that comes back to you at your next meeting.
That was my suggestion, thinking anyway.
You're welcome.
I'll just make the motion. I move to approve the notice of intent to adopt ordinance O-21-05, accepting the transfer of real property from Southeast Arizona Renovations LLC located at 5205 Fort Wachuka Lane and number one Cochise Row Bisbee.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve notice of intent to adopt ordinance O-21-05. I mean, the motion Frank made the second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Pollock. Councilmember Giacominio. Yay, thank you. Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Aye. Motion passes six one. So moved. Okay, item 12. This will be for discussion only. This will be the presentation of our, that we'll be making to the Planning and Zoning Commission at their next regular meeting for recommendation and approval for recreational marijuana zoning. So we finally got to you, Joe.
So Mayor Council, this is just the, the proposed zoning code ordinance with regard to the recreational marijuana that we had discussed at the previous council meeting. This creates an article 10B, 10A being the medicinal marijuana. And essentially, it, it follows the, as council said, follows the, the medicinal requirements, but doesn't limit it to organizations that already have a medicinal license. So it opens it up to, anybody who, who can get a license can come into the city. But these, the recreational requirements would follow the similar requirements that are, that the, the city established for the medicinal licenses.
All right. I hope we've all read this. I know I have a couple of questions. I actually posed them to Joe earlier in a short email, but I want to hear from anybody else. What do you all think of this as far as us helping this up and sending it over for a public hearing with planning and zoning? Any comments? All right, I, I'll always give you my, my situation. So when I read this on page four, if people zoom down, it talks about basically that it follows our recreational zoning, which of course requires a special permit, special use permit. But then it talks about the parking requirements that would refer to, to the 10A section, which means it falls into the old parking requirements that we used to do, or we do still have across town, which is, you know, so much for so many square feet, so much for so many employees, so on and so forth. And, you know, and my concern was, what will that limit us? What would that limit somebody that wanted to start this to what area? And it basically limits a lot, but then I realized that we had accepted Old Bisbee in these parking requirements. So I just want to reiterate the fact that, that I think, Joe, we, if I understand what you told me is that exception for Old Bisbee would not, then the parking requirements would not be required under this section. Is that right?
Right, because although those are more specific, it's a specific, special designated area. So those rules governing that area would apply as opposed to just your standard, standard rules. And I think even the medicinal provisions under 10A for standard conditions that were, that were set were even a little more flexible for the medicinal because it only required a maximum, a total four paid free public parking spaces, two of which were to be accommodated for disability access. Whereas under our, under the, the regular code for a facility like this, you would be looking at one parking space for every 200 square feet.
Okay. Just something I, I looked at and to see what, I don't know about you, but of course I've heard about what's going on out at the Green Pharmacy right now and the parking situation and the so on and so forth. So we need to be a little bit thoughtful about what and where. But then again, we don't want to limit ourselves to, to maybe three spots in the whole state, the whole city that has that much free parking. So you know, it, I think we'll have to deal with it as it comes before us. But I, that was a question that popped up into my head when I read the two medical one and associated it here with the, the recreational one. From what I understood and what I, what I've been able to find out, there's only going to be one more, one more license given in Cochise County at this time recreationally. Sierra Vista just passed that their two to five, I think, that they're. Recreationally, Sierra Vista just passed that their two to five, I think, at their council meeting to accept it. I know Wilcox has one that they're going after, so possibly even Douglas. So there will possibly be four to five, you know, applications. And, you know, we don't want to be out of the running, but then again, what, what determines what they pick will be, from what I've understood, a draw out of the hat, basically, you know, roll the dice and maybe you'll get it, maybe you won't. So it is, it's a far, far stretch, but there may be more licenses down the road. They may open up 26 more, they said later on. But I think the Green Pharmacy could use some relief for, for the long lines that are out there. So anyway, that's, I probably always say more than I should, but anyone else? Any other comments on this, sending it over to P and Z for public hearings? Alrighty then, oh, I saw, yes, Leslie, go ahead, Leslie.
I was just wondering, there's a lot of stuff in there about marijuana testing facilities. And I kind of thought through our discussion last time that we had maybe agreed we didn't want anything to do with those. Is it just necessary to have that language in there, whether we're going to have them in this town or not?
Yes, Mayor and Councilmember Jones, it was my understanding for our discussion that testing facilities were going to be okay, but as long as they were in the industrial, the M3 zoning, which is why it's, the definitions are in there, those are standard. But then, as you see in, in 10B.3B, which talks about, it says, shall only be located in M3 zoning, which I believe is the, the industrial zoning for the designations for the, for the city. So that, it would be, be limited to that because of the, what we talked about, the concerns with the chemicals and different things like that.
We don't have that much, that much area, go ahead. Sorry, Leslie.
Well, I was just saying, thank you.
Oh, okay. One note I just wanted to make for the public by reading this, in case I didn't, didn't, there's a lot of talk about growing marijuana for yourself, where you're allowed six plants. And understand under this, this ordinance and also by state law, doesn't mean you can just plant them in your garden. They have to be under lock and key, within your house, or, you know, and out of sight. Some, there's some, much more restrictive than I think everybody thinks, they can just throw them up anywhere. So just so that they understand that's, this is not throwing the, you know, we'll see tall, eight foot plants popping up over every fence. Joan, go ahead.
And she brought that up, how did they come up with the six plants in 12 for two people, the age of 21? Is that, was that a regulation someplace or a restriction?
Yes, Councilmember Hanson, that's, that's part of the, the state law that was passed by the voters. So what this does is it just basically incorporates and, and reemphasizes what, what's allowed under the, under the state law, but then puts it into the zoning so that if there are issues, that the city has the ability to enforce those zoning restrictions.
Thank you.
We don't want the state taking our money away because we didn't follow. Oh, oh, the baggage, that's, oh, we remember that one, we stay within state law. All right. Looks like no other discussion, so somebody like to make a motion to send this over to P and Z.
It's on the agenda only for discussion. It's already, it should already be agendized and published for the P and Z so we can get it going.
Yeah, thank you. I'm trying to run my mouse that fast and it's not going quite as, all right, thank you. So now we move on to item number 13. This is another discussion only, this is one I asked to be put on, and I'll, I'll take the floor for it. It basically, as we all kind of know, the farmer's market has been with us for some 20 plus years. I do believe that, that the city has more or less been subsidizing them because our standard rates have been $600 a year plus the, the fees for the, for the license or for the permit. And so they want, you know, they were looking at reapplying. And unfortunately, under our codes, what happens is, in my opinion, is that we don't have a method to actually price out what would, what we should charge for a yearly event versus a single one. We have, we have fine, a fine set of, of numbers for a single event where we know who's coming and who's putting it on and so on and so forth. But when you start to do it, that year in and year out, it makes it very hard then to, to come before council with a number that you know, that you can run the market with, because it's astronomical when you start adding those fees up every single time for 52 weeks. So what I'm asking for discussion here tonight is among council members, if you would think it would be something worth adding to basically our, our fee schedule to allow these yearly type events. And what I'm proposing is, I want these yearly events to cover their costs so that the taxpayer is not necessarily subsidizing, but yet it makes it reasonable enough that they would sure be able to, to continue to hold them. I predominantly think this is a community event. It, you know, we're not bringing in a lot of out of towners and stuff, it isn't a big vacation draw or a visitor draw, but it's more, more about serving our own community, and so we should make it affordable. So on my little sample, it's what I'm asking to see if we would consider is a standard permit fee and a special license fee. That hundred and five or $10 would cover the costs that would take to run all the paperwork and do everything. But it'd be a one-time fee for the year, not every, every 52 weeks. And then they need to pay for electricity they would use. I've thrown in $10 a time, or if they elected, they could, they could, we could read the meter and they would pay for, for what, what electricity they actually use, that's possible. It's a little more work for our people to have to read it and turn it in and then bill it. So, but either way, that would work. And then as far as water usage, of course, they'd be using the bathrooms a lot more, we wouldn't. And so I would, what we have in our fee schedule now is $25 a day. So I would recommend that would, would produce, give them the water access and bathroom access that they would need. Non-COVID, the bathrooms would be open anyway, but this would, this would share the cost of additional use than what would normally happen when, when there wasn't a farmer's market or another year-round event. And of course, then we have some park staff time. Our parks person has to go there and turn the power on and set, get the water going. And, and of course with COVID, they have to open the bathrooms and close them, but on a normal basis, they'd be there to do that anyway. And then after the event is over to go back and, and lock everything up or shut the power and the water off and just check the park to make sure it was picked up correctly and put back in the same shape. I'm, I'm anticipating that should only take them about an hour, just to read this, open stuff up and then go do whatever else and come back and close things up another half hour. And then finally, it's the trash. So on this whole trash situation, my proposal is, instead of giving rollouts, because rollouts are problematic and in fact, in fact, if we leave them there, they could be used by anybody and everybody since we don't have locks for them. I guess we could develop a locking system and I'll ask Jesus if that's possible. But if not, we, once we start to distribute all the rollouts in the city, or I mean, Old Bisbee, we should have some extra dumpsters that we could put a lock on and, and just give the key to them. Then normal pickup would be just whenever the normal truck would come around. They wouldn't have to come on weekends or do something special. It'd only be used once a week, and then everything would be contained, we'd get no wildcat dumping. So I'm, I'm, I was looking in there and seeing that for, for a small commercial business, we charge them because basically they are doing a little business for one dumpster, that's 60, about $65 a month is what we charge for those. And that would equal $800. So when you add this all up, I'm looking at about $4,000 a year for, to, to run a year-round event. And this is just again, a sample for, for Vista Park. But that sounds like a lot, but when you break it down to 52 weeks, it really comes up to be like $78 a, a weekend, which to me makes it reasonable enough that, that they could do that and we could cover our costs. Now, I'll, I'll grant you, yes, there's wear and tear on the park and there's additional things that we'll probably have to do because of the, the more usage, but that's the part the city will do to help, you know, the community as a whole. And, and so I'm thinking, you know, if it's a little more for us, the, the two things that I would, the last one, it's always the sticking point is the vendor's fee. Vendor's fee on a, on a normal one-time event is for us to make sure that we, you know, get a little bit out of the dent ourselves. But for a community event like this, whether it be anything from, you know, buckling and drilling to coaster races, to the, to the Fourth of July parade, I mean, things that are truly predominantly community events and not some, something that I, I, either a nonprofit or another business, a booze festival or 1,000, that's, they wouldn't of course qualify for anything like this. And the last caveat I would put on this would be that the park must be left in the exact condition it was found. If, if our park person shows up and there's a lot of boxes that have got to be emptied and a lot of stuff that's got to be picked up, then they're going to be charged extra. We have to be able to, to, to hold them accountable to make sure that our park is left in the same condition. So, all right, that's a lot of my explaining and, and I'm, I'm trying to hit a compromise here. And I'm, I want to hear from everybody and see what you all think. So first hand up, Joan, go ahead.
Why don't you come up with the 13,000? Because I come up with 98.57.
Yeah, the, the 13,000 that's crossed out on my little thing was, was from, came from another sample that was given to me by the city, which included a lot more garbage and so on. So I just crossed that out and put mine in the red on the side. It wasn't very good, to be honest, I did this on a Sunday afternoon, so.
I just added up what you had on that first column. But it, you know, it still is a saving for them. The only thing is, since it's going to be a yearly permit, special event, what, why is a special event license required?
That's in our standard pricing, there's a permit fee and then the special event license is, we have to go up and post things like the COVID things. It's, to me, it's, it's a one-time fee. If you figured it out over 52 weeks, it'd be $2 a, a week. And the reason is to cover our costs at administration of handling the paperwork, going out and posting it, the COVID stuff and so on and so forth. It's, that's what it's about.
Yeah, Mayor, Mayor, if I may, the, the special event license and the vendor fees actually fall under our business licenses. So, and our brick and mortar folks pay a business license every year. Someone who comes from the outside, we ask them to pay their business license as that special event license. And the same with vendors who don't already have a business license with the city of Bisbee. That's really their participation in our business licensing program.
So if we don't, we would, we would have to change it then if you're not going to have vendor fees, correct?
Yeah, the vendor's fees would just be waived on year, year-long events. The, the problem with vendor fees is, what I've been looking into is partly, there's some state laws that if you grow your vegetables and sell them, the city's not allowed to charge. Now, we're not charging directly, we're charging the, the applicant. But to me, it's kind of like a backdoor situation, plus vendors change. There's usually a lot of them that stay the same every time. But by keeping the vendor fees down and not having to do all that reporting and tracking and, and, and collection, then it makes it affordable for whoever would like to run an event like this, a community event, to be able to hopefully keep their vendor fees down so that they could draw more people and so on. By us throwing another $6 on top of it, then they have to add their costs to cover their insurance and, and also these other costs that I've included. So I think it's more hassle than it's work on these. A single event that's held in town, absolutely, you know who's showing up, you, you, you planned for it. But, you know, this is, this is something I thought was, was more.
Brings up another question, and what about liability, what about insurance?
Absolutely, you have to have the million dollar policy with us in name, that's.
So that would be the, the farmer's market then, that would come up with that.
All, anybody who holds anything in our city needs to have insurance.
No, and I understand that. I just wanted to make sure that, that this was covered because you were talking about the businesses having to go out or the, the vendors having to go out. I think if it's, if it's a yearly, I would like to, to see the permit fee and the special event license fee be more than it is just for one event. Not for every event, but maybe for, you know, so much for a quarter or so much for a six months or so, but.
Sure.
I would just like to see that, that, that go up a little bit.
So.
And I would leave that to the city managers to, to what would be.
My proposal was they would pay these fees quarterly so we could do a, you could do a vendor's, add that on on a quarterly basis of some way. Don't know if we need to, a permit fee every time, but we could do a, the special, you know, the event license every time they paid quarterly, that, that would be renewed, something on that area. Because they're not giving a new permit each four months, but they would, something like that, that's a good suggestion.
But I think the, the original permit fee should be, be more, be 65. Because that's what you're charging for one person to do it once. I mean, that's, that's quite a, a savings. And I'm, I just think that that needs to be a little bit more.
Yeah, mainly I thought permit fee was to cover the, the paperwork and the, and the necessary uses of the, of what needs to run through the system. So that's why I thought we'd charge for the permit fee. That's, so I decided we're still running one permit for one time and, and that's why I left it there. But I'll opt anything. Lou, go ahead.
I, I think we're going about this the wrong way. And what I mean by that is, I think it's a good idea to attempt to get the farmer's market back on solid ground in Vista Park. And if, if that's the ultimate goal here, I'm 100% for that. However, the details that you've outlined in your concept for this are really the purview of the city manager, not of the city council and the mayor. It's her prerogative under the code and under, under the charter to negotiate contracts with vendors. And if this thing's going to come in under $5,000, which seems pretty reasonable to me, I would think that she could sit down with the people who are responsible for the farmer's market and do her due diligence and work out an agreement with them and come back to us with that agreement for our approval. That would be the proper way for us to handle this. I commend you on putting together the concept plan, I like it, it, it has a lot of quality, good qualities. But we're going about it the wrong way. I think it would be best for us to direct the city manager to sit down with the people who, in the farmer's market and encourage both of them to come to a suitable agreement within the laws that govern this body and then present that proposal to us for our discussion and or approval. That's the way I feel about this.
Great, thanks, Leslie.
I disagree with Lou. I think that we have had talks between the city manager and the farmer's market, from what I've heard, and they haven't gone very well. And I like your proposal, Ken, and I think that just like with what we. And I like your proposal, Ken, and I think that just like with what we went through with the animal shelter, sometimes we need to give more specific direction. And I like what you've outlined. I don't agree with Joan, I don't think the permit fee needs to be higher because I think that when you're doing all that stuff, you're covering, you know, sort of the paperwork and you you do only do that once in a year, even if it is a permit for a year. But I like the proposal, I think this is a good compromise and I'd like to see it work out.
Okay, go ahead, Lou.
I'd like to get our lawyer's opinion on this matter because we're we're stepping on nice here. I don't believe it's right for us to circumvent the city manager. It's her job to do these things, not ours. We can give her guidance, we can tell her what we think should be done, but we need to leave the nuts and bolts to contracting and procurement law to her. And I'd like to know how Joan feels about this.
I just just as a note about that, Lou, the reason I brought this up is under the code that she's that she has to follow right now, there's no way to change the numbers. If we as a mayor and council set the 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 fee schedule, we say how much a fee costs. Isn't the city manager, it's not a parks person, I can't expect my parks person to say, oh, well, we'll waive that for you. The only body that can waive fees or consent something, I believe, is the is the mayor and council. Now, I'll I'll refer your question absolutely to Joe, but I I think that's what where I was coming from is that that I don't want to put the city manager or any of the parks person or public works people to negotiate outside of what the code is calling for. So I want to change the code, which is the fee schedule. That's where I'm coming, but.
I'm with you there. However, the city manager brought us the fee schedule, it wasn't the other way around. She presented it to us and we frankly didn't have enough time to examine everything that was in that fee schedule before we gave it our approval. But it wasn't us who set those fees, it was the city manager.
Well, I wasn't here, but I thought they voted on. Okay, go ahead, Joe, can you begin?
Mayor Budge, Councilman Pollock, and members of council, there's kind of like an intersection between the 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 different roles because the manager is responsible for managing and doing the day-to-day operations of the city. The the fee schedule has to be or is under your processes is adopted and approved by ordinance by the mayor and council. So essentially, the, you know, the 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 city manager's hands are are tied when it comes to negotiations because she has to follow the fee schedule that's been approved by the mayor and council. And if there's going to be any type of change to that, then the mayor and council has to take up and and address any changes or waivers and stuff there. The other thing you have when you adopt a fee schedule is it's not just the ordinance. Then you you also have to comply with A R S nine dash four nine nine point one five, I believe it is, where then you have to have a sixty-day notice of publication on the city's website with regard to any new fees or increase in fees. That has to go before the the ordinance goes to council, similar to what we have to do with the the bed tax two two-point-five percent bed tax increase. It has to be published sixty days before. So there's a whole process there in changing those fees if you're going to increase or if you're going to establish new fees, which that appears with this discussion is setting up a new fee for a yearly as opposed to a a day, a daily or weekly or whatever the the fee schedule is. So there is some some intersection there with regard to the it is the mayor and council that have adopted the 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 fee schedule. And although proposed by the the city manager, the the mayor and council, you know, you guys set the the fee schedule and if if there's certain fees that you want to adjust or change based off of circumstances and that's that's done by way of ordinance to the mayor and council.
So, if I may, Joe, in essence, we're cutting the city manager out of the process altogether, correct?
No, not necessarily, Councilmember Pollock, it's similar to the the budget. You know, the the council doesn't prepare the budget, the city manager prepares the budget, but the council can go through the budget and can and go through every single line item and can change those and talk about them and and address them as to 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 shape the way how the council wants the the, you know, the council's view of how how the city should be progressing or going. And then it's the city manager who then, once that budget is approved, then implements that budget and manages that budget. So that's the same process here, it's, you know, the fee schedule is proposed, the council discusses it, the council approves it, and then the manager implements it and follows it. So if there's gonna be changes or if they're if they're, you know, in order to to be able to accommodate something different from what's on that fee schedule, then some of that has to come back to council for discussion when it comes to that fee schedule.
I'll address my last question to the mayor. Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
How do you how do you envision opening direction to the city manager? This is a discussion-only item on the agenda right now.
Correct.
What is what is your plan to move forward on this? And several people have expressed their concerns, one way or the other. How would you see this going forward? I agree that we should change the fee schedule so it's more reasonable because adding up a bunch of numbers from the fee schedule on a fifty-two-week basis results in an absorbent exorbitant amount of money for these people to pay. But the fact remains, we have a a vendor who provides this service. We're negotiating with that vendor to keep them from leaving or we're trying to entice them to keep them from leaving Vista Park. I see that as the the main reason for this whole discussion right now. If that's the case, how do you envision us moving forward? Are you going to give the city manager this plan that you drafted up and say, implement this plan? Or are you going to just give her counsel and and mayor advice that she should move forward in an attempt to get this fee this fee schedule reasonable so that we can keep those people in Vista Park?
So let me answer quickly, I'll go to you, Frank. What I envision about this is I wanted, I don't like to just do one thing independently. So I wanted to hear everybody's feelings and what I would ask then, if we can come to some consensus, is then send it to our city manager and the Parks Department and ask them to bring something back. And I this is just an example, something that will cover the costs that are needed so that the taxpayers aren't subsidizing this that they, but yet I'm sure will be reasonable enough. And I'm not trying to entice one individual or one person to come back. That person has already left, they said, and they may never come back, but there's already interests, I know, from two others that might want to start something back up. So I want to make it easier for the city manager that she doesn't have to stick by the fee schedule that we have, which is looks very, you know, intimidating when they are applying that we actually have something that she can follow and 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 feel comfortable with. That's that was my that was my point. So Frank, go ahead, yeah?
Well, I was just gonna, you know, make basically the same comments you just made, that this is a change in the fee schedule, this is negotiating a contract. And there may be other people who want to take over the Vista Park, you know, farmer's market. So I think first we need to adjust the fee schedules that make it reasonable for someone to do so. And I, you know, Louie, we're not negotiating a contract with anybody particularly, just changing the the fee schedules.
Well, there's more to this than than what you're saying, Frank. There's the fact that the city manager and the individual who love the farmer's market have been at loggerheads and unable to come to agreement on basic items like paperwork required for a permit so that they can comply with Arizona law in regards to the COVID epidemic. There's there's more to this than just the fee schedule. If it's just going to be to correct the fee schedule so it's affordable and we can go out and get someone to run Vista Park farmer's market, great, I have no problem with that. If we are catering to the people who already run the farmer's market, then we're going about it in the wrong way. We need to rely on those people, like adults, to sit down with the city manager and work out their differences and not run to the mayor and ask for his help, thereby circumventing the city manager. I'm against that.
I I understand that, Lou, but that is not my intent whatsoever. The the nothing in what I'm suggesting would would decrease the paperwork at all. The same permit would have to be filled out, the same price would be, they would have to meet all COVID restrictions, they would have to sign. And whether it is the person that was there before or somebody new that comes in, all I'm talking about here is fees. Because that is one of the hangups. The rest of them, if people don't want to fill out all the paperwork, that's their problem. We're not changing that, that's not not even on discussion here. We have the we that's all already in code and it is fine. And, you know, if they don't want to go through all that and get their vendors permits or, I mean, their food permits or whatever, that's their problem, that's that's not what I'm suggesting. What I'm suggesting is we can give them a base price and say, this is what it would cost you if you apply here, okay? And and want you to cover our fees, the city's what it would cost to 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 take the garbage away and give you water and power and 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 whatever. So, yeah, I'm not, this is not catering to any one person, I'm actually catering to three people right now that might be interested in doing this. So I just think that when there was, to be quite honest, I think it was a big bad mistake when they passed the fee schedule and then put something like this in there that would allow it, but but basically handcuff the city manager to have to stick by the code that was passed in the past. And I I feel for her because really she can't negotiate and say, well, I'm gonna give you all this away or not. She can't do that because it's in the code. So we need to set a fee schedule that she can live by and I'm asking her to bring one back. That's what I'm asking, that's all. I hope I hope you can kind of get my feeling.
You know where I you know where I stand on this, you know how I feel about it. And I I took the opportunity to let you know that so that you can proceed ahead with what you're doing.
But I want to basically, no vote, but I just want to see if I if I don't want them to waste their time to bring something back to us in two weeks and then we're all gonna just throw it in the garbage. I I wanted to have this open discussion beforehand and I'd like to hear from Hannah and I'd like to hear from Joni. What what your feeling is on on changing, putting a fee schedule in place, so. Whatever, Anna, go ahead.
Right, you know, I think if this streamlines it, I think it's a better, I think it's better for everybody around, for the city, for the participants or whoever on the market. I just streamlined and hopefully it would ease some of this back and forth.
Okay, thanks. Uh, Joni?
Um, I also think it accounts for the costs that the city has been putting out, being accounted for. There's no reason why the farmer's market can't pay for like water, electricity and the garbage and be accountable for that over the whole year. I don't see what the big deal is or what the issue is of you putting forth that proposal. It could be for, like you said, anybody who wants to step up. Because there's no guarantee the original people that were there are gonna come back. This could be for anyone that wants to use the Vista or any other park for that matter for a year-long event. So, you know, I think we do need to revisit that fee schedule because it's it doesn't account for long-term usage.
Okay, Joan, I saw your hand real quick, now I'll get to Frank.
Go go ahead and take Frank first.
Okay.
Well, I I was just gonna say, you know, we want to see a farmer's market back into Vista. That's a it's been a big thing for our community. And I think adjusting the fee schedule is gonna allow somebody to do that in a reasonable manner. So it doesn't have to be, I don't see that we're catering to the previous people, you know, anybody.
Okay, thanks for that. Go ahead, Joan, thanks.
I just want to bring up the fact that this is not something that is new. This has been going on at least for the last six years. And there's always been an argument about what they have to pay. They're supposed to be paying this and half the time the city didn't get the money that they were supposed to pay. And so I I really don't like the fact that the city manager is being kind of oh, I can't even think of the word, chastised for not going along with them. She's trying to do her job. There are people in this city that just don't want to play by the rules. And the farmer's market has been one of them. But I do agree that the cost at this point is unmanageable and I think it needs to be looked at.
Okay, thank you for that. And I agree, I mean, part of this, I'm hoping, will alleviate the city manager of being between the rock and the hard spot, which is I have to charge these fees because they're in code, you guys have set them, and and now I have a method that I can charge a more reasonable thing to cover our costs. That's that's what I'm and I and if everybody kind of gets along with that, I'll go ahead, Joan.
I just wanted to add one other thing is that we need to make sure, as Lou said before, that it is covering the cost and that it's not costing the the taxpayers. That's one of the the biggest things.
Right, and that's what I want them to, you know, under under the city charter, you give me instructions and I give the city manager instructions. And so I just want to make sure that I don't step over and say, I did all this and then bring it back to you. You guys have had no inkling of what I would like to see, you know, and so that's why I bring it to you for discussions. And I'll work forward from this point and hopefully maybe bring back something. This is a discussion only and and I think I have some some way to know where to maybe go from this. And I want to sit down with our parks people and and of course, our city manager. And they were they will produce something to bring back to all of us. You know, I'm not designing this, I'm just trying to get the the thing discussed and and decided. That's the way I try to, I'm I'm trying to work. So I'm gonna move along, we're kind of, I know this is gonna be a little bit of a discussion, but we got one more and this one is gonna be the city manager's. So this is item fourteen, this is discussion of possible approval to purchase tax lien certificates in the amount to succeed five thousand dollars to protect city interests. Go ahead, thank you, Teresa.
Thank you. So I I think you've all been aware, as we've been working through the housing initiatives, that we were purchasing some tax certificates on properties that the city had an interest in. And those were properties where maybe there was a notice of violation or a sewer lien. But what has been happening to the city is that investors have been purchasing up tax certificates on properties in the city. And when they foreclosed their tax certificate, they foreclosed the sewer and garbage lane that the city has on the property. So Joe Estes has suggested to me that the city take a proactive stance instead of a reactive stance when it comes to a property that we have a tax lien on. And as it happens, one of the properties that has a large tax lien on the property also has a tax certificate that's going to auction this month. The tax certificate is significantly more than the five thousand dollars that the city manager is allowed to spend, but it's a way to get in a position to not have our sewer lien foreclosed on. Joe, is there, Joe, is there anything more you'd like to add?
Mayor and council, yeah, this is a discussion that Teresa and I have. Because apparently there there are some substantial sewer liens and 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 city liens on properties that if if those properties have the 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 tax liens purchased up by an investor and then they go to foreclose, then when they foreclose, the the city's lien is extinguished and the city doesn't get anything. An example of that was I was able to negotiate a fifteen-hundred-dollar payment from a tax lien holder on a on a property that the city had a ten-thousand-dollar sewer lien on to be able to avoid the the additional costs of having to go through the process of of doing the default hearings and things like that with with the court. So we're able to get some of that back, but, you know, there's a couple two twofold issues there is, you know, the allowing, you know, the it's my understanding that in the past, a lot of these but allowing, you know, the, it's my understanding that in the past, a lot of these debts have been allowed to go on and on without terminating services and stuff like that. Uh, and that there's got to be some coordination between the city with the sewer and the, the private water company. And I understand that. But I think, for example, the one Teresa's talking about, what is the, the current sewer lien on that property?
I think it's around $23,000.
So $23,000 lien that the city has. And now if, if an investor comes in and purchases out that $50,000 or $60,000 tax lien and then in three or four years forecloses on that lien, that $23,000 that the city had an interest in that property on is extinguished and waived. Whereas if the city takes a proactive step and says, okay, you know, these properties, we have substantial city liens on, whether they're the sewer liens or they're, they're liens because of, you know, under the code violations, the city had to go in and clean up or, or board up the properties and stuff. And the, the city's able to establish lien under Title IX. Take a look at those and if those properties have a tax certificate coming up, that the city take a proactive step of acquiring those tax certificates so that the city holds them as opposed to an investor who in three or four years will come in and foreclose and wipe away the city's subordinate lien. Whereas then the city has the ability to then in three or four years, be able to foreclose on those tax certificates and recover and protect its interest in its underlying water or other liens or sewer other liens.
Okay. Questions? Yes, I see. Big waving hand, Joanie.
I have a couple of questions. Why doesn't the lien travel with the property when they pay for the tax?
That is a matter of state statute. There is, when you, and that's the way the, the state has set up the statute to, to encourage the payment of property tax. The state wants property taxes paid. So the way the statute reads is that the property tax, if you foreclose on, and you purchase a tax certificate and you foreclose on that after the period of time that's allowed, that you have to hold on to it, that extinguishes all, all other junior liens to that. And that's all liens other than, for example, if there was a mortgage on the property or something that was recorded. But that extinguishes all, all other liens or city liens or any other lien. So the state has established that as, as state statute.
So I got another question. I thought we had a bill collector. How come if we have a bill collecting company that's supposed to go in and collect fees, why have some of these been allowed to become so high? I don't, you can't answer. I don't think you can answer that. Someone else is.
Yeah. And I don't know that I can answer it because this of course has been happening for years. I understand it's just been in the last couple of years that the water company has agreed to participate in the shut offs because it wasn't possible for the city to shut off sewer without the water company being willing to shut off water. So that's now in place. Also, it's pretty unpopular to shut off a business or a resident because it essentially makes their home unlivable or their business unoperable. So it also has to, I think, has been part of the council's philosophy about how they want to handle those. So the finance department does do their very best to try to work with businesses and homeowners to come up with payment plans. I think at one point the city did a 50% forgiveness program to try to get folks current. So the city has tried a bunch of things. I don't know what kind of public appetite there is for the just, you know, if you're late, you're late, you're 45 days late and your sewer shut off. We do try to work with people, but then that also puts us behind the eight ball when it comes to collecting.
So on all the tax liens that we've purchased so far, how many have we taken into foreclosure? And how many have, someone's come in behind us and then paid a year and now we're kind of stuck in this limbo? And what's the guarantee that that's not going to happen when you do it this time?
I, I can answer part of that question. There's a statutory period that you have to hold those tax, tax lien for.
Right.
And you can't foreclose for, I believe it's three to four years. And yes, that individual can, if they want to and they're able to, can come back and redeem those during that period of time. And they have to pay the, the percentage of interest that was established when, when those liens were acquired.
I'm referencing one that we already hold a tax on that we paid $2,000 into the tax and then all of a sudden we got beat out by not the property owner, but maybe someone paid it for the property owner. So they only paid one year. So we're holding $2,000 of a lien and then someone jumped ahead of us and paid. So now we're kind of in this limbo. What's to say that's not going to happen again?
It does not put us in limbo because we still hold the tax certificate. So we hold the tax certificate, for example, for 2017 and 2018. Now, if someone paid 2019 and 2020, that doesn't take away our tax certificate or our ability to foreclose that tax certificate after we've held it for the required period of time.
But it does cause a problem for enforcing anything on that property. As far as squatters or such.
You don't own the property. You just own the lien.
I get that.
Right.
So then when someone else comes in and pays part of that tax, then who? You have three different people now involved who's responsible for that property? And that's my concern about buying up these, you know, these taxes and here we are sitting on them. You know, what's to say people aren't going to jump in and pay ahead of us? And are we really securing our, our finances?
Actually, yes.
If you're referring specifically to the two properties, that Edward Thomas Properties, we have filed 30 day notice of intent to foreclose.
We, we can foreclose on those liens regardless of somebody comes in and pays the, the future ones. We still hold that lien and we can still foreclose on that lien. And just like any, any investor, anybody who goes and purchases a tax certificate and a tax lien, they don't own the property. They don't have the right to go on the property. They own the lien to that, to that tax. And then after a certain period of time, you're entitled to foreclose on, on that lien. And that's when you obtain ownership of the property is when you can foreclose on it.
So these properties that are listed, how many are the, of them are, have people living in them? How many of these properties that are on the four pages of tax liens? How many people, how many of them are habitated? I guess. Is that the word?
Yeah, I cannot answer that for you, but, but.
Okay. So let's, let's say there's 20. What's going to happen to those people if it comes down to us foreclosing? Are they going to be staying thrown out?
Exactly. Yes.
Wow.
Yeah. What happens to those people if, if a, if a investor comes in and purchases those tax?
Yeah. Well, that's a investor. That's not the city.
Well, no, I understand.
I know, I know. It's just perception. I know.
And the, and the only purpose for this discussion was for those specific properties. Because not all four pages of properties on that, on that lien list or that, that tax rule list, does the city have a, an actual interest with an underlying sewer lien or something like that? The whole intent of this is to try to be able to protect the city's taxpayer funds that were expended because of the, those tax liens and be able to protect those from an investor coming in and just wiping those away.
So I guess my last question, and I'll let you have it, Lou. What steps have been taken now to prevent this from occurring? Since we have the bill collector, are we doing anything to prevent these from piling up? And when we see that we have somebody that's getting up into the thousands of dollars of debt to us, what steps are being done to alleviate that?
So the first thing we do is try to work with them on a payment plan so that we essentially don't put them out of business. I can tell you that we are working with the water company on a particularly high profile business in Old Bisbee that has also not paid their water bill. So we will be shutting off the sewer at the same time that the water company shuts off their water. Now, if they bring their water bill current, it's going to put the city in the very unpopular position of essentially closing that business down by shutting off their sewer service.
Uh, Lou, oh, okay. I saw Lou's hands first, so I'll get to you.
Thanks.
This is for the city manager. You had mentioned that these certificates are substantially more than the $5,000 you're allowed to spend. How much more and where would you get the money to buy them?
Right. So the money would actually come from the sewer funds since it's protecting sewer liens. And ideally the city would have some kind of repayment or acquire the asset, which then would be an asset that would go to the sewer fund. So these are primarily to protect on the sewer fund. The city has $1 million in outstanding sewer debt. So there's a lot of debt out there and the potential to have it wiped away. So for a particularly high profile property in Old Bisbee, they're currently, they're currently behind to the tune of about $125,000. The tax certificate that we would purchase would be $76,000.
How much again?
$76,000.
Okay.
How many, how many do you envision?
You know, I, and Helica is working on this for me and I'm sorry that I don't have an exact number at this time. Uh, we can update you all with the spreadsheet when Ann Helica has it completed to show you what the amount of our lien is and what the amount of the outstanding tax certificate is at this time.
Thank you.
And Mayor, we'd also want to show what, what the value of the property is as well because the city might be interested in, in, in obtaining a tax lien on a property where the lien is far in excess of what the value of the property may be. That just wouldn't, wouldn't make financial sense. The whole purpose is to try to protect the city's underlying interest in the, in the liens that the city has.
Leslie.
Oh, I wasn't clearing my throat to, but um, anyway, I'm just wondering if this is a good time for this because I understand that we need to protect the city's interests. I understand we've got a million in outstanding debt from this, but we're in a really hard time right now. And I just feel like it's unconscionable to be shutting down businesses right now when we're in a pandemic, when we're about to have major economic issues in this country. And is there any way that we can put this off until maybe things start to go back to normal a little bit? Because I understand the necessity of it. Like I said, I just feel this is extremely poor timing.
Okay. Anna, I saw your hand. Go ahead.
The question I have is, you had those four pages of properties. What, how many of them are you looking at? I'm sure it's not all four pages, correct?
Right, right. So Ann Helica is going through the list of the certificates that are coming up for auction. And this perhaps will answer Leslie's question. So Leslie, if we're not the initial bidder, we will not in the future have the opportunity to purchase the tax certificate. So any investor who bid this round would have the first opportunity to pay the, to purchase the tax certificate the next year and the following year. And then in about the fourth year, be able to foreclose on the property. So this isn't going to stop properties from being foreclosed. And what it will do is keep the city from losing its lien position on the properties as they're foreclosed. So we would only bid on tax certificates for properties that we have an underlying lien on, not the whole four pages.
And Mayor, if I could point out, it may actually be an ultimate benefit to a property owner if the city bids on it because the way these tax lien, so the, the certificate process goes is they go up, you bid on it and you're, you're not bidding on the amount of the lien. You're bidding on the amount of interest that you're going to get from 0% up to 16%. So if I go in and I want to purchase this lien for property A, I say, I'm going to, I want to purchase that. I bid 16%, but somebody can bid 10%. And so the more people you have bidding on these properties, the lower that, that interest goes. So when the person, or if the person is able to then go and redeem that, instead of having to redeem the lien plus 16%, it may be the lien plus 5% or the lien plus 10%.
Now's my chance to quickly ask some questions. So I saw all these pages and of course it wouldn't make sense to go pay somebody's $500 or $600 tax, back tax payment for an $88, you know, sewer bill. I mean, that, we gotta look, I'm sure you're going to look at it and say, we have to, the, it has to pencil out to where the amount of money that we're going to take out of the sewer fund to protect us isn't that much more than what's owed in the taxes or else it wouldn't make a lot of sense. Because to me, that's, that would be silly to pay a lot of taxes for a very small sewer bill. So that's one. Number two is what are we going to start bidding on at what rate? Because I mean, we, you can go in at zero and, and that's as low as you can go, but within we make nothing on our money, yet we're paying, okay, for a big, long, big loan on that sewer plant and no sewer. And so we should at least get the same interest back that we're, that we're paying out on our loan to own the sewer. So that's running around three and a half percent, I believe. Correct me if I'm wrong, Carrie. I, I wasn't here when that happened, but. So it seems to me that we have to be somewhat careful though. We just don't go in and, and throw a whole bunch of money with no interest into it and we have to tie it up for four years before we could foreclose. It, it's a, this is a lot more complicated than just a, a simple, you know. It's, to me, it's a little more complicated than what I, what I'm overall hearing. So that's, I guess that's my, my whole idea is I understand going in, because if you don't buy the initial lien, okay, well, then you're done because you can't really, the, whoever buys the initial lien then gets the chance to buy the next lien and next lien until they foreclose. Correct, Joe? It's, you're, you're, you're now in the position, nobody can come over the top of you and, and as long as you continue to pay those back tax, those taxes that weren't paid. So that protects you, protects you, but every year you have to, you have to pump more money into it, which as long as you're making a little bit of interest, that's fine. But I don't know about no interest. So that's, that's my concern is are we going to, are we going to not make any interest on this? What's, what's the idea on bidding, Teresa? Zero or some?
Well, that could be part of the, because you do have to make a motion for the approval. That could be part of the approval process. And that will be part of our learning curve actually acting proactively. Really the other option is that we start shutting people off.
Right.
And real quick, just a quick question. Teresa, when is the, when do those liens come up for auction?
I believe it's the day of our next council meeting. So it does need to be a decision at this meeting if we're going to bid this time around.
Right. And then the other option is, is if, if we, if we don't do it this time around, that we're able to implement this type of procedure at, at the next available auction. You know, and hopefully at that point be able to come to council with a list of those properties with the, the amounts of the outstanding current city liens, what the tax lien is. And then, you know, what the city would anticipate the lowest amount of interest. Because I can tell you, an investor's not going to go in and not, not going to, you know, take zero. Because I can tell you, an investor's not going to go in and not, not going to, you know, take 0% interest on a, on a lien unless, you know, they were certain that the, the individual wasn't going to redeem it and that they were going to be able to pick up that property. Because otherwise, they're just, they're just parking their money for 0% and not getting any return on it.
Yeah, that was my fear. And anyway, I.
Right. And it is a pretty, it is a pretty tight timeframe, especially when I have to work around council meetings. So, we just got the list, we had the list on, must have been Monday. You know, so Monday morning, it's like, oh, look, our list came. But I also have to get this on the council agenda because now I know that the bid date is the following meeting. So, we have a really tight timeframe between receiving the list. We can be better prepared for when the list comes up next time, perhaps. But, um, yeah, it's.
Yeah, well, the list doesn't really, it just came out and, and you can prebid, but that won't happen until like a week from now, where you want to prebid. I, I got a little bit of this, Anna, go ahead. I saw your hand.
So, we're talking about or hearing about the tight timeframe. I guess that was my concern is that we always seem to be in this rush crisis mode or whatever. And there's so much information regarding this whole process that I really wished it would have come to us previously and maybe in a work session or a special session so we could, you know, discuss it and take action and not at the tail end of an already long meeting. I, I think this is important enough that it, that we should have had it separately, you know, with the work session or with the special session.
Yeah. So, the, just to explain, the county treasurer gives folks like a drop dead date to get their taxes paid before they go on the list. And then she publishes the list. So, it's not that this list existed at any point in time until she released it.
Which was two days.
She, yeah, and then she releases it in time for the auction.
But we can still hold a special session where this is the only subject that we're talking about.
True, but it won't help you protect your lien position for any of the properties that are coming up for auction this month.
Actually, if the mayor and council schedule a special meeting.
Well, that's true. Thank you.
Where we, we can specifically discuss the actual properties that came out on the list. And that was just yesterday morning. And yeah, and part of this, I'll take responsibility because this was my, my idea that was something that I did for the city of Yuma. I attended these, these auctions to be able to, to, to protect the city's interest in different properties that we had liens on. And I had mentioned, just recently mentioned that to Teresa when we were talking about a case that we had where the, the one I mentioned before, where we had to negotiate a $1,500 payment on a property where we had a $10,000 lien because they were foreclosing it. So, we're able to get some of that. So, that's when I mentioned this idea. And again, the, the list didn't come out till yesterday. So, if it's something that council wants to say, okay, we want to digest this longer and we'll, we'll bring this back and do a more detailed work session to talk about the concept and idea and try to implement something like this before the next, you know, the, the county does the next tax lien list. You know, there's no issues there. The, and whether the council wants to go forward and do this or not, you know, you weren't doing this before. So, if you, you, you take and you wait, it's not going to be a substantial issue. It's just something that, that Teresa and I were talking about and is a way for the, the city to try to better protect its underlying interest in those liens that the city already has. So, please don't feel like you have to make, if, if it's something the council doesn't, wants, wants additional time and, and wants to digest and, and get additional information and stuff, absolutely. You know, don't feel like you're, you're rushed or you have to do this now or we're going to lose out, you know. This hasn't, this, this process hasn't been implemented by the city in the past. It's just an idea that I've used in other jurisdictions to better help protect the city's underlying interests in those properties.
I, I need one quick question, Teresa. When, on this list of, that you have out has partial numbers, these are partial numbers for taxes. This isn't the amount of money that's owed us for in back sewer, right? There's not, there's no number for sewer. Okay, so what you're looking at is, is the primary assessed value and it says amount due. That's due, that's what's due in the tax if you divide the tax lien. Okay, so this, so we can't compare what somebody owes us in, in sewer that we're protecting versus what their tax bill would be yet. We don't have that coordination.
We don't have that yet. Ann Helica is working on it.
Yeah, that's pretty critical. All righty, we got lots of hands.
I'm, yeah. Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Frank.
I think it would be a good idea to table this and, and have a special session or whatever. So, we can better understand what all the ramifications of this are. I think it sounds, it has some merit, but I think we, as a council, need to better understand what we're, what is being proposed here.
Talking some bucks. Lou?
With Frank's.
Well, I, I need to know more. I, I'm a number guy. I like to compare what they owe us versus what we're going to have to pay to, to protect that. So, and then how long we're going to have to continue to pay that to protect it. And I, and, and I, my personal feeling is, this is something we want to step in very lightly at first. Do a few, you know, and get our feet wet and see how this goes. And then, you know, if there, if it isn't a real big issue, yeah, if you have a $150,000 building or $500,000 building and we can get the tax lien, plus they owe us thousands of dollars and then that might be something to look at. But a lot of these little small ones, this doesn't seem to, to, to work. But anyway, Joni, go ahead.
No, I, I agree with Frank. I do have a question. How, exactly how many are we talking about?
Well, we could bring that to you in a special meeting if you want to do a special meeting next week. Ann Helica can have all the information together for us.
Yeah, I think that would work.
All right. I'm proposing we table this and I'll call a special session next Tuesday if everybody, oh, uh-oh, Joan.
That's when Parks and Rec.
Well, hopefully it won't take, well, we'll, we'll be later than Parks and Rec.
All right.
Parks and Rec starts at 5:30. Anyway, Leslie, did you, did you have something?
Oh, I was just going to say I can't make next Tuesday, but.
Well, I don't know. Our, we'll look at the schedule and I'll just have Ashley put it out and we'll find out what fix works best for everybody. How's that? I just said Tuesday because it's like the standard day.
Yeah.
We won't, I won't say exactly the day yet. We'll see what works best. I want as many people in here on this as we can. And, you know, but it can't be before Tuesday because they've still got to work out all these numbers, I imagine. So, okay. So, I make a motion that we lay this on the table for further consideration. Can I get a second?
Second.
Lots of seconds. All those in favor of putting this on the table, laying on the table for further consideration, say aye.
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 Sounds like ayes all around. So moved. This is tabled until we come together and all have a little better aspect and some better ideas. Okay, city manager report and we can call it a night.
Okay, I'll try to be quick. So, Carrie will be prepared at your next regular meeting to run through your year-to-date financials with you. If you have specific questions, please get those to me next week so Carrie can be prepared for the meeting. And then the OK Street petition that you received at your last meeting, I did reach out and speak to the individual who put in the petition. He thought it would be a great idea if the city sold that property and the neighbors could work out how they were going to park there. So, we have ordered a survey of that parcel in order to go through a process similar to what you went through today for some other city real estate. And then the financial year 2020 budget schedule is out. I think you had that included in your packet. If you didn't, let us know. And that's what I have.
All right, everybody. One of our bigger.
Get on to comments.
Okay, yes. Oh, you have comments. Go ahead, Leslie, thanks.
Okay, I'll be really fast. This is about the Bisbee Art Commission. And they are looking, they're looking to give out grants this year to local artists up to $500. The form can be found on the BAC page of the city website. And the big news is that they have changed their deadline this year to accommodate for the pandemic. So, they're going to be giving out grants based on rolling deadlines throughout the year. There's not one set date. They intend to be very understanding about the difficulty of deadlines this year and will work with the applicants to make projects possible. So, please contact the Arts Commission through the city clerk if anyone has questions. They are dedicated to supporting the arts in our community, especially in these difficult times. And that's what I got.
Thank you for that. And thank you, everybody, for hanging in there with us. And obviously, next week. Motion, Frank.
How would most make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second, we have a second to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Ayes have it, so moved. Good evening.
Good night, everybody. Thank you so much. Good night.
Get out of here.